The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Perth Amboy Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the bulletin board in the administrative headquarters building. Mailing notices to the home news Tribune, El Diario La Prensa, City Clerk Cups, as well as all other persons requiring notification pursuant to the New Jersey Opens Public Meetings Law. Roll call, Mr. LaBrase?
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Crawford.
Here.
Mr. George.
Here.
Mr. Marte.
Here.
Ms. Melendez.
Present.
Ms. Oduyela. Mr. Keles.
Present.
Vice President Gonzalez.
Present.
President Peralta.
Present.
Have a warm.
And now for our student representative, Mr. Angel Cruz.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education, esteemed community members and fellow students, I am here today with great enthusiasm and pride as student representative of our vibrant school community. I am here to provide you with an update on the significant events and accomplishments that have taken place at Perth Amboy High School in recent months. Firstly, I want to express my joy at returning from a successful baseball season, which is why I have been absent from the last couple of meetings. Although varsity in JV teams did not win a championship, the season was filled with memorable moments, including an exhilarating comeback win against Saverville. On Monday, the Athletic Honor Society induction ceremony will recognize our athletes who have achieved academic success. There is a sense of relief and excitement in the air as most students have completed their finals and are eagerly looking forward to the summer. This time of year is always special as we celebrate our achievements and look forward to the break. In March, the Student Council hosted a highly successful spring fling dance. It was a night filled with fun and laughter as students danced to music presented by the Triumph Honor Society. The event was a tremendous success, bringing joy to all of those who attended. In April, Triumph hosted a Princess and the Frog Movie Night, another successful event where students relax and enjoy time with friends. They will also be hosting their Aloha to Summer open mic event on Monday. Seeing our school community come together for these enjoyable activities is heartwarming. Triumph has also completed its board elections, and I am pleased to announce that the Student Council and National Honor Society elections have also been completed. I am excited to be running for a second term as Student Council President and hope to continue serving our school community. Our commitment to community service remains strong. The National Honor Society and Key Club collaborated on community cleanup in front of our school, collecting approximately 40 trash bags. This effort demonstrated our dedication to maintaining a clean and welcoming environment for all. In May, the Science National Honor Society held its induction ceremony, a fantastic event celebrating the achievements of our new inductees. Their hard work and dedication to the sciences are truly inspiring. On June 6, Perth Amboy High School hosted the Senior Scholarship Award Ceremony. Thank you to all the counselors and administration who helped with this event, and most importantly, thank you to the donors who help support our future leaders. The school honored 108 seniors with scholarships. In closing, I am incredibly grateful for the opportunity to serve as a student representative throughout the year. Representing such a talented and dedicated student body has been an honor. I continue to hope, I hope to continue in this role next year and witness even more of our school community's wonderful accomplishments. I wish everyone a happy and restful summer. Thank you for your attention, and I'm open to any questions you may have.
Thank you. And now for our presentations, our HIP presentation on self-assessment as required by the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights and School Safety Data System for the 2022 and 2023 school year by Ms. Caitlin Tivold, our Director of School Counseling and Related Services.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here tonight to present on our HIP self-assessment. These scores were submitted to the state from our district in the fall of 2023, and they represent the 2022-2023 school year. The self-assessment serves as an opportunity for schools to evaluate efforts in implementing the anti-bullying rights, and it's an effort between our anti-bullying specialists, with myself, the building, I'm sorry, the district anti-bullying coordinator, and our building principals, as well as our building school safety teams throughout the district. So the HIP self-assessment consists of questions that are self-scored from zero, representing not meeting expectations, to a three, which is exceeding expectations. A total score between 52 and 78 indicates the school has met or exceeded expectations in implementing the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. And in May 2024, the state released the final district and school scores to be posted on our district website. I am here tonight proud to report that all Perth Amboy public schools have met or exceeded these expectations. This next slide is just a visual of each of our buildings. Again, this represents the 2022-2023 school year, and our district average was a 69 out of 78, which is the highest possible score, and all scores met or exceeded the expectations throughout the state of New Jersey. So next steps, how we're going to use this data. As a district, we're constantly assessing ways to improve and continue to grow. We're going to enhance and we continue to enhance all efforts for social emotional learning offerings to our, within our buildings, and especially to our students. We're going to continue to grow as professionals, to build rapport with students, and continue to assess the needs and assess, I'm sorry, the needs and support for each individual student. We're also going to continue to evaluate district data and make informed decisions and best practices, working within our school safety and school climate teams, which are represented throughout the district in each of our buildings. This is just a visual I was hoping to share with everyone, especially because of the support from our Board of Education, our central administration. These are some of our students in action, getting to kind of enjoy and put to practice what sometimes is discussed here and shared. You can see our peer mediators being trained. Those are certificates given out in our buildings recently this spring from the peer mediation training that was completed. We're able to just continue, even though summer, I know everyone's in mode for summer, but when we come back in September, we have a percentage of students already trained and ready to begin conflict resolution and peer mediations inside our building, starting in September. So we're not going to skip any, we're going to have fun this summer. We're going to continue to come back and be ready to support our children in all of our buildings, elementary, middle, and high school. Also, you see some pictures of students in groups, small groups, large groups, classroom lessons. This is all on social emotional wellness. This is all on conflict resolutions, life skills, character education, and this is just kind of, just a little visual of what's happening inside of our buildings. So lastly, these scores don't represent, believe it or not, the Peace Works Peer Mediation Conflict Resolution Program yet, because they are from the 22-23 school year. But because of our district being honored to be an award recipient of the New Jersey Department of Education's School-Based Mental Health Grant, and because of the efforts with our Peace Works curriculum this school year, we're excited to enter into next school year, year two of this grant, and really see what those efforts are as a climate team and school safety team throughout the district. So we're going to continue to implement these efforts, and we're excited to get the results back next year to compare them to some of this data that we're sharing with you tonight. Last but not least, in closing, we have a brief video from the department that really shows the efforts of our counselors, our SACS, our non-traditional school psychologists throughout the district, and who better to kind of share a little bit about the peer mediation and peer and conflict resolution program than our students? So you're going to get some of the feedback from the students throughout the district, the representation of elementary, middle, and high school, and you'll kind of just hear their take on this school year so far and how that program is going. Thank you again for, I'll conclude with that. So thank you again for your support, and please always reach out to the school counseling department if you have any questions.
It feels new. It also kind, it feels like a bit fun and also feels interesting.
I think students are excited whenever it has something to do with school climate, right? So whenever we're improving our school climate and teaching students skills when it comes to getting to spend time with their counselors who are going into the classrooms, they're excited about that, right? Our students want, want to know who we are, and they want to hear, you know, and learn about the skills.
That makes me feel like I have people to rely on to help me with anything I need. Like if I'm sad, they can help me. If I'm stuck on something in my life, then they can help me.
Like when you're solving the problem, I think they should be like more so calm than like a bit like stressed or something like that, like calm and like feel normal.
If me and my friend were having a problem, I would just like say my side of the story, and then, and then after I'm done giving my side of the story, they would say their side of the story.
Helps you like express how you feel and how the other person feels.
February, we got to learn about empathy and the difference between empathy and sympathy, which I kind of had trouble with, so it kind of helped me too.
This year, our counselors in each of our buildings visited classrooms to share our district-wide initiative of our monthly calendar and the themes that we have to spread kindness and healthy relationship building, and ultimately reminding our students of the people inside of each of their buildings, of who they can go to if they want to resolve any conflicts or having any conflicts, and how they can resolve them in a healthy, positive way.
Gives the kids a chance to reflect and think about some other parts of their life, especially again, especially with the older kids, that social emotional piece is really starting to play a really important part in their lives, maybe more so than ever before. So giving them a chance to reflect and talk and to practice some things that they can take into their, you know, social life, I think is really important, and they seem to enjoy it.
I do enjoy going in, and they see me all over the building, so when I go in, the teachers are like, a surprise guest is coming, and when I show up, they all get happy. And it's nice, it's nice just to talk to them, to listen to them, to share with them and have that time with them.
I found something called the Peace Path, and it's basically a thing that we laid out on the floor with feet, and the kids can stand in their different kind of sections, and they move down the line of the Peace Path, and there's different words that they use, and so they can actually practice talking through a conflict by walking down the Peace Path and using the prompts that the Peace Path has to talk out a conflict resolution.
The themes do help solidify what we're trying to do with social emotional learning. Going back into the classrooms is excellent. We're able to speak with the students themselves and be able to leave these students with more knowledge and a different skill set, especially regarding conflict resolution.
Giving certain students or giving the students that are already showing leadership ability, the skills to be able to help other students resolve conflicts in a peaceful and productive way is going to really set our students up for success, because they can trust their peers, they can trust, you know, that the peers are helping them, and they might feel more comfortable talking with peers than they do talking with adults.
Social media is actually where a lot of conflict happens. Things are spread, things are seen, told, misinterpreted.
People, when they get offended, they get really angry, they get really upset, and they say things they don't mean.
And that's where conflict and resolution comes in.
When you teach people what to say and how to say it like the proper way, you're able to resolve things much faster, much easier, and a lot of things will be avoided.
Nowadays bullying, it's not just, you know, textbook bullying, pushing it to the locker, mysterious lunch money. It's more, more subtle, like you don't see it as much, but it's definitely there. And I feel like the school pushing out that help, you know, teaching people what to do and showing people the right way to go about dealing with those situations. The school has a lot of support, a lot of ways, a lot of materials to get help, and it's right there, you just got to take it.
Thank you for that presentation and for the video. And now, meeting open to the public for discussion of agenda items and non-agenda items. There will be only one public participation session at this meeting. At this time, comments are invited on any matter. Public participation shall be governed by Policy Number 0167. Anyone wishing to address the board, please state your name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No member of the public may address or question board members individually. Although the board encourages public participation, it reserves the right through its presiding officer to terminate remarks to and/or by any individual not keeping with the conduct of a proper and efficient meeting. The board discourages the public from speaking negatively about any employee, administrator, or student. Individuals can be held personally liable for the defamatory or libelous statements made at public meetings. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by members of the public. Comments regarding employees, administrators, or students cannot be legally responded to by any member of the Board of Education or administration.
Is this on? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Pat Paradiso, President of the Perth Amboy Federation. On May 22, 2024, this board made the unanimous decision to lay off 17 secretaries, seven technology specialists, four homeschool liaisons, and three nurses. These actions will have consequences. This decision means that our students will be less safe next year. It has already led to custodians being asked to man metal detectors when students and staff are entering the building. It has already led to secretaries being asked to sit at security desks. It has already led to physical education teachers being expected to act as medics while vice principals cover their classes, and being expected to carry medical kits on class trips. The lack of nurses in this district is dangerous, especially when we have students with serious health conditions, including asthma, dangerous allergies, seizure disorders, heart conditions, and diabetes. If there are two health emergencies at the same time, who decides who gets treatment? If a nurse is absent or at lunch, is there a health, and there's a health emergency, is the expectation that a physical education teacher will be summoned into action? We were told that these cuts were for efficiency in any economy, only to see on this agenda that the two security administrators received 16% and 17% raises. What a slap in the face to the staff who lost their jobs.
Good evening. Lynn Odette, 33-year veteran teacher, fifth-generation Perth Amboy resident, taxpayer and voter, and the district representative for the Perth Amboy Federation. I've had multiple staff members reach out to me tonight that they wanted me to ask you what the signage is being referred to on page 32, Agenda Item Number 60. $115,000 is being spent on these signs that are deemed necessary to open up the new high school. Staff would like to know if these signs are necessary for safety or if they are decorative. The staff members who asked me to bring this concern to you tonight are upset because whether you want to admit it or not, they have spent this entire year low on supplies, field trips have been canceled, busing for prom was canceled, programs were cut, and now we're going down to a skeleton crew at most schools when it comes to our nurses, security guards, secretaries, techs, and homeschool liaisons. And also, I, it was brought to my attention right as this meeting was about to start, so I didn't have a chance to research too much into it, but tonight on the agenda, the custodians under their salary approval, there are multiple custodians that the head custodian's stipend was not in there, assistant head custodian's stipend was not in there, the night differentials, and the longevity. So a lot of those salaries that are about to be approved for tonight for the custodians are incorrect, so I just wanted to make that clear. And also, the National Board Certified Teacher stipend was left off, so some of those salaries that are on the agenda for this evening are not correct. And also, I just wanted to like ask a question like this. I picked up the agenda before, and I was like, wow, this is like thick. I thought all the attachments were in here and everything. I was really like shocked to see that this is only 38 pages. This is like a very, very thick agenda. I would just like to make a suggestion to save paper, since I know we're having such a shortage of paper in the district, maybe they could double side printing the agenda each month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Randy Schmuleski. I'm a parent of a student here in the district and was hoping that the board might be able to share some light on plans for the dual-language school, seventh and eighth grade classes for next year. My son is only going to be entering the second grade, but it's a program that we're deeply love, and we've got neighbors who are entering the seventh grade next year who told us about the program and helped us get into the community and have just had such tremendous success and seen such tremendous success, right? Seeing West Windsor and Edison and other districts, Princeton, having these programs, and so was really, really upset and disheartened to hear that seventh and eighth grade might no longer be options for students in Perth Amboy, and was hoping to get some clarity, because I think there's been information circulating and wondered if the board could provide some clarity.
So, yeah, so thank you for letting her know. So we can't respond right now, but we will at the end.
At the end of today's meeting?
Yes, after executive session. Oh, after this portion. So if you could just sit and wait while everyone else goes up to the mic, and in the end, we'll address that.
Okay. Thank you very much for the information and hope that we could get some clarity and hope that there's a way that seventh and eighth grade can be there for next year and also for the future.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Sharon Huberman. I'm a resident in the city of Perth Amboy. I am here today because I am extremely concerned about the direction of where our schools are heading, as each of you bear a huge responsibility in the leadership regarding the school district. And in that leadership, it is to prudently manage the $290 million plus that we receive as a school district. It is through my recollection that we even had over $40 million in the surplus. And while the amount of schools are now going to incorporate a new high school, in the planning process, what should have been allocated is an approval of a budget that is going to lend to the growth of the education, of the programming for our students. Instead, we are addressing cuts in areas that should not be cut, because it is warranting a risk to our children. And for that reason, I am here, I'm here today. I'm not only extremely concerned regarding the direction of where we're going as a school district, but then there's other areas that you can explore in order to have shared expenses. For example, Special Three officers. I don't know why it was never explored. Instead, you end up growing another department where you could have had collaborative efforts in terms of the expense to providing security for our teachers. The nurses, I know many children who have allergies, asthma. Do you know how serious that is? That is a life-threatening situation. And in the midst of COVID, those individuals, as well as other individuals, have other ailments that you may not even be aware of, that at any moment, any second, a child can be at risk. So any shortage or cuts in an area that provides healthcare to our children, I hope it was an oversight by the Board of Education, and you can correct and make amendments that are appropriate. Then we're going to the support staff. So in essence, I am here today to say, please, reevaluate the situation, and if it comes down to making the tough decisions from the top in terms of the administration, because you are the employer, not the employee, then you make the cuts, and it starts from the top, the administrator or anyone at the top that is leading you down a pathway of destruction for our schools. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tina Marie. I am a parent of the DLS, students of the DLS program. Also, I have a child in the RML program. As a parent who is a direct recipient and beneficiary of the Dual Language and Bilingual C program, I'm deeply concerned about the decisions of the future of the seventh and eighth graders within the Dual Language program. As a parent of a seventh grader who will be in eighth grade next year, it is disheartening to hear the future of the Dual Language program. Also, as a member of the PTO of the Dual Language program, it was a smack in the face, because we are working with the children on a day-to-day basis to ensure that they are focused, that they are motivated, that they are no longer seen as a side program. This program has matured immensely. Our children are no long, are not only fully literate in English, but now they are reading, they are writing, they are speaking proficiently the Spanish language. It is, I would like to implore options and understand what is the future of the Bilingual C seal. My son, the seventh grader, we committed fully into this, the bilingual program, simply because they were going to have that Bilingual C seal, that they are going to have advantages for their future. However, I would like to know, what is the future of the Bilingual C seal? Is that still an option for the students when they enter high school? What, what options are available for us as a family that now they are, what we are being told, because the information has been limited, that they are going to be going to their homeschool, so, or their intended homeschool? Sorry, I have no idea. So as a parent, we feel that we have little or no control to choose what school and what is the best option for our families. These children have been in the same school, in the same location since second grade. I look forward to hearing and understanding what options, what's feasible. I do have a child that's in the first grade, and she looks forward to going through the entire program.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone, and I hope everyone's doing well today. Just know that this comes, of course, from a place from love. I do want to echo as well what the parents were saying with the dual-language school. Of course, I cannot make any assumptions, because I know we are all here to obtain more information, but as a student here, as a, as a more information, but as a student here, as a, as a current, um, school counselor and as a previous student, I wish I had the dual language school. Maybe my Spanish wouldn't have been so choppy as it is now. But our entire team, our parents, it's just, it's, we're a small family. It feels like a small, little private school. So I do hope that we can engage in some discussion and some things may be out of our control and of course, I understand that, but I just wanted to come here to express that as a school counselor, I know the parents are here and a lot of our students are here, administrators, we love our students, we love our school, we love our parents and we do hope to explore some options because it would be disheartening. And in the future, we just hope that the dual language school program does continue. And I know I did see the seal of biliteracy. I hope that that, of course, it's, it's there now, but I hope it continues as well for years to come. And I hope that we continue to be the role model of different districts of the dual language school so that way they can see that. So that's all I wanted to say. And then for the presentation on piecework, that was absolutely amazing. As a school counselor, the students absolutely love it. So thank you for working hard and obtaining grants and to, of course, every single department here who work so hard, every staff member. And of course, thank you as well to the board and to the administrators. Have a good night, God bless, and, um, I'll be looking forward to answers as well. Take care.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Escalier Araujo. I go to hell here in Perth Amboy because I want my kids to have the dual language. I want my kids to be able to speak with my family in the Dominican Republic in the same language that they speak. Knowing that the seventh and eighth grade will no longer assist in the dual language, or that is what we heard lately, uh, is very disappointing. I really want you to take in consideration that these kids, if you see the, um, their grades compared to the regular, you will see it's very, very different, it's very high, it's higher than just the regular school. Also, I want to know if this is just the first step to remove the dual language for, from Perth Amboy, because I have a third grader who now is going to the fourth grade next year. We don't even know what school she's going because we haven't received anything. Last year, I remember my friends who, who had kids who were going to the dual language in four, they, by this time already have a meeting, have been there, we haven't received anything. So we don't know if they are actually going over there, if there's another school that you are going to prepare for them or what is going to happen. Also, I have a kindergarten. Is this is the first step to remove the dual language from Perth Amboy? Because if it does the case, then many parents will be moving from Perth Amboy because most of us are staying here because we want the dual language. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for all being here. Uh, my name is Melania DeJesus. I'm here as a parent, uh, with four different school. I also came over here, uh, to, uh, debate a little bit about the dual language, but I saw that, um, many people already, uh, went ahead of me. But I'm also here, um, to thank the board members and everyone, the community and, um, many of the new staff that, uh, came on board to the Perth Amboy, especially the middle schools. I have children in, um, the dual language, Rosan Lopez, and I also have, uh, in both McGuinness and Cho School. And I, um, I want to appreciate for, uh, the great implementation that they, um, the great effort that, you know, uh, they did to, uh, to help improve this community. And, um, we are the new members that came in on board. I, um, we know that we are working together and I can see, uh, and many other people can also see the effort that this community and the school, the public schools is putting toward, uh, making a Perth Amboy a better place for, for us, uh, for the community. I also wanted, um, bring up a, a person that, um, had to do with, uh, public transportation. Um, and this doesn't happen too often, but, um, I saw a problem which, um, in one of the, uh, street in Perth Amboy where, uh, they were about to have a, uh, like a major accident or we have a few already, but, um, I also tried to adj- I addressed it with the, um, with the, uh, with the, uh, public, uh, facility, uh, for the, um, I'm sorry. It had to do with the, um, Department of Not only Transportation, I'm talking about the transportation right now, uh, with the school, uh, school transportation, but, uh, there was an issue that it had to be taken care of the city hall and, um, but all the part it had to do with the, uh, with the, uh, public transportation. Uh, and I called a person and I asked for, uh, the director or the supervisor and, um, immediately, two days after, we see a call where that person actually, uh, got out of the office and went and actually took, uh, his time to, to, to look at the street specific, specific where, uh, the problem, the issue was. And I, I really appreciate as a parent, um, the attention that that person took. And also, um, as I said before, um, you know, when, um, we asked for, uh, social emotion, which was a very need and I, I see the great improvement and I think that it might not.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joanna Arroyo. I've been a resident of Perth Amboy for just over forty-two years. Also, I worked for the district just about twenty-six years. I'm also here to, uh, speak of the dual language program. I have, uh, two that are in the dual language and they've been there since pre-K. They can read and write excellent in both languages. If you're going to get rid of that, I, I, I really don't understand why. And if you do, can you really explain to us why? I mean, isn't it a good thing that children know how to read and write in both languages? And if they continue on, it only helps them more. And then maybe they can learn a next language, maybe three, so biliteracy, learning two languages. And they get it done. They've not had any problem. And I've know plenty of other children that have been in it since pre-K and doing very well. And it's a great thing to have. So please, don't get rid of it. Thank you.
Hi, members of the Board of Education. Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Luis Canturencia. I've, um, lived since I came from Dominican Republic in Perth Amboy for over nineteen years. And, um, it's such amazing town that, uh, I grew up. And, um, I came here because of the dual language program. You know, this is the only town, the, I believe that they had that kind of program. It's very important. But the thing is, do you take it any times and think about it, the other towns around us, that they want this type of program and they don't have it? You know, at least now they are starting, I believe in Edison, that kind of program, and they start working very well. So, and there is, I have a lot of friends because I travel a lot in the East Coast and, um, in the state, they don't have it, that type of program. You know, and they want that type of program because right now, a lot of community, they grow up so fast and especially Latin people. How you gonna take it off a program in a town that eighty-five percent of the people, they are Spanish? And right now, imagine if you put a hundred kids, Spanish and English, in a different type of job, helping other people. Think about it in the future, don't think in now. Think about it, how many kids they're gonna learn in Spanish and English and they're gonna bring a good service in the future and make it most better and proud this town. Think about it in that, think about it, all the people who sacrifice time, hard for make our children learning a beautiful language. You know, it's so hard. Today, my daughter, she graduated from that program. But the problem is, we don't know what's gonna happen because right now you want to take it off and we don't have any answer about that. Think about it, not in now, just in the future. Those kids, they're gonna help a lot of people because this is gonna be continued growing up. And you're thinking hard, but take a time in thinking in solution because I know that there is solution because our money, they are spending on other thing that is not important right now for make it grateful this town. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Dr. Pepe, do we have anyone remote?
Yes, I have people in the remote. Uh, good evening. My name is Dr. Pepe. I'm the IT Director and I will be moderating the remote public portion of the meeting tonight. For those of you who wish to speak, we are going to use the raise your hand feature in Microsoft Teams. For those of you who are calling them remotely to raise your hand, you need to press star five and follow the system prompt to unmute. Remote participants will hear a beeping sound when their three minutes are up. Okay, I have no participants, um, with their hands up wishing to speak in the remote.
I need a motion to close discussion or to close the session?
Motion to close public session.
Any discussion?
Second.
Discussion, Dr. Roman?
It's closed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is it all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to take this opportunity to, uh, comment on a number of different things. I was gonna, um, save dual language for last, but I would like to thank the community, the parents for number one, coming out and giving us an opportunity to not only hear you, but to speak to you, but also I must say, uh, the elegance and I guess the respectful way that you spoke is, is really admirable and we appreciate that. So we're gonna try to answer all of your questions. But I need to go backwards before I go forward, some comments that were made, the need to be reflected, um, has to do with, you know, staff being asked to take on other responsibilities that are not, uh, uh, that's not related to their immediate responsibilities as an employee. It's just not accurate. If anybody has that situation, they can speak to the principal, they can speak to the director of personnel because we don't, um, violate the contract and we have individuals that are assigned to do certain things and they do it. So therefore, no one's being asked to take over anything. If that is transpired without our knowledge, let us know and we'll address that issue. I'd like to apologize actually to, uh, Tivo Casco and to, uh, uh, Roman Keen, our Director of Security and our, uh, Manager of Security for, uh, the typo that was in the board agenda because they only received the three-point-five raise like everyone else has received in this district. That is a stipend that every security guard that is armed receives, so they did not receive, uh, the amount that was there. It's three-point-five on their salary and it is, uh, the stipend that all security guards that are armed receive. So my apologies to those two gentlemen because that was supposed to be confidential as to who is caring, but it would be asserted and assumed that the director and the manager will be doing that. But still, sir, I believe Mr. Roman's, uh, Mr. Keen's over there, I apologize that you had to endure that. Again, not accurate. Supplies, I can't speak about that anymore. It's just at the point of not even commenting because clearly we have enough supplies and we've asked principals to ask their staff and the staff members have not gone to the principals. The stipend longevity and salary, um, I'm gonna ask that, uh, our Ilan de Gomez, our Director of Personnel, just take a look and see what's, what could or could not be there as an error. And clearly, if there's an error, we're going to, uh, reflect that error into something that's accurate. I'm so glad, uh, the nurses, I do want to speak about this. The nurses were so polite as, as staff members when they came up. It was really nice to hear from them, but I, here's some qualifying factors. The nurse, we're, we're required to have one nurse in the district, that's it, besides for preschool. We have eighteen. I think that demonstrates a commitment to nurses. We also have a nursing supervisor in the district and most districts don't have a nursing supervisor. In addition to that, three of the positions were not cuts, they were positions we didn't fill. Many of the positions that we, uh, no longer have due to budget constraints were positions that were not filled. I must make note of it, our dedication to education in the classroom, we did not riff any teaching staff members because of the importance of what takes place in the classroom. So that needed to be said as well, but I wanted to just again mention that we are above the requirements of the state for nurses in our district. And we have so many nurses because this board and myself saw the value of, of having nurses and therefore we hired so many nurses beyond what was required. Dual language, something near and dear to my heart. I need to speak it, speak about that from the onset. Ten years ago, when I arrived here, it was actually one of the questions I received in my interview, which is, we would like to pursue having a dual language program that will allow us to have what you see, you see right now. This is something respectfully that myself and the board and Dr. Vivian Rodriguez and administrators created. We love this program. We love this program. And I'll bring it to a personal level. I'm a high school dropout and when I was growing up, my father would speak in Spanish and my mother would speak in English. And not back in nineteen sixty-four, they, they wanted you to assimilate. So that, because they wanted me to assimilate, I wasn't able to grasp the language in Spanish in the way that I wanted to grasp it. Now, I understand Spanish totally. I speak well. I don't speak as beautifully as your children do and many of you do. I'm actually jealous of that. However, as time went by and my mother got more integrated into America at that time, she was able, she started to say to my brother, I want you to start to speak Spanish. I actually studied this dichotomy of the brain and how it works with Spanish news. My father was not able to be successful in life because he couldn't speak English. My mother was successful because she was able to speak both languages. So the goal of the dual language program was to continue to go all the way through, through high school. But the realities are the realities and that's what we're gonna share with you. We're not dismantling the program, we're gonna look to continue to modify and enhance it, but some of the things that we need to make you aware of are out of our control and they're verifiable. You can look it up, uh, New Jersey Code statute. But I wanted to make clear that everybody up here loves the program. But I wanted to make clear that everybody up here loves the program personally and professionally. That's why we designed it, that's why we created it. It did not exist here before we got here in its current format. So as a district, as a school district, we have supported and promoted bilingual education, dual language education is... You know, someone said it's a beautiful language, it was recently, I read something and it's true. And then, and I was having this conversation with my brother, and again, he's very fluid in Spanish, he speaks beautifully. And he was saying that one of the most important things of, that occurs in Spanish language is that it is the language of angels. And I believe that. And that is something that has been said throughout the nation as far as referencing Spanish. However, our dual, we are the, even though we're the first public dual language school in the state of New Jersey and we opened in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen with grades two, three, and four, we decided to keep building it. When Rose Lopez School opened, we actually reshaped the school district to not have that become an elementary school and make that a dedicated dual language school. Because it was supposed to be an elementary school when it was originally created. So this administration, this board said, "No, dual language is important, let's dedicate that school building to that." Then we started to grow so big that we took the program and put it outside of the district and placed it in Ford, as Ford's, as many of you know, at DLS. Each year, we've added one grade level on purpose. This required the district to rent additional space, spend hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars to open up a school in another district, another district because we believed it was that important. In grade nine, we wanted to implement the dual language program, so we created a bi-literacy program to support the former dual language students. Many of the students in the bi-literacy program have earned the state of New Jersey Bilingual Seal and are fluent in both languages. Someone said, "Are we going away with the bi-literacy seal?" No, we're gonna continue it. When we arrived here, I think we were at thirty-eight students who had the seal of bi-literacy. This year, Dr. Medina, we have?
Three nineteen, three nineteen.
What was it originally, thirty?
We started with like in the thirties, very low.
Thirty. So our dedication is palpable and it's in data, three hundred and twenty students, twenty, you said? Three nineteen. Three hundred and nineteen students this year graduating with the seal of bi-literacy. That is a dedication to the seal of bi-literacy. Again, when we arrived, it was in thirties. Every year, we have increased the seal of bi-literacy and we will continue to increase the seal of bi-literacy by offering different opportunities to students to be able to express themselves in that way. Let me give you a couple of things that are going on that, that just impacts this program. And you've heard this before, but it's true for everything, not just teachers, but even more so here. There's a national shortage of teachers. There's a term that we use called the unicorn, the unicorn teacher. That's a teacher that can only teach certain things. It's that physics teacher that's hard to find in, or is that dual language duly certified teacher that is able to be bilingual. Those teachers don't exist. Many of you parents know that this year, we had to have our instructional leaders, because we felt the program was so important, go into the program to help teach that. But they were teaching it in English, there's not fidelity in those programs. According to the Century Foundation's article, you can look this up, "America's Missing Bilingual Teachers, Two Thousand Twenty-Three", the shortage, excuse me, the shortages are longstanding and national in scope. Again, the article, Century Foundation's article, "America's Missing Bilingual Teachers." So let's talk about this. The dire shortage of bilingual educators becomes more and more accentuated at the secondary level at grade seven to twelve, where bilingual education teachers must, must hold both a content area certification in math, ELA, science, or social studies, a bilingual, bicultural education certification. Again, they must hold that. So this shortage has negatively affected our DLS school. We ended up having to have entire classroom, again, instruction being taught by substitute monolingual teachers who ended up teaching in English. That's not the design of the program, nor is it beneficial. In addition, there's a code. We are required by the state of New Jersey to ensure that we, Mr. Dr. Medina, I want you to speak about this. The requirement by code, as it's in reference to who, who we must service first prior to servicing the students in a dual language program. And he's gonna speak to you about multi-language learners. And that's what our required focus has to be.
Yes, I can elaborate on that. So the bilingual code of the state of New Jersey requires that the district mandates, the district serves students who are classified or labeled, labeled as multilingual learners first. Currently, DLS has only twenty-seven percent of those students. The rest are monolingual students that do not fall under the classification of bilingual education or multilingual learners who necessarily do not need a bilingual certified teacher, which are at DLS or Rose Lopez or across the school. So there's a big number of multilingual learners district-wide that now, due to the shortage of bilingual educators, do not have a certified bilingual teacher in place.
And I wanted to just reemphasize something, that we all know that Perth Amboy is a port of entry community. And what that means is exactly what Dr. Medina said, that we are required, according to New Jersey Bilingual Education Code, to implement a full-time bilingual education program and enrolling twenty more multilingual learners in a single language group from kindergarten to grade twelve. The students that are currently enrolled, I want to make sure I say this correctly, Dr. Medina, okay? Reemphasize what you're saying because it's embedded in law and in code and we can't supersede it. The students currently enrolled in the dual language program are a mix of regular and multilingual learners. Currently, only twenty-seven percent of the students in the dual language program are multilingual learners, while seventy-three percent are not. If we have bilingual teacher shortages, we must utilize district bilingual certified teachers to fill vacancies to serve the students that must have bilingual services as per, you can write this down please, New Jersey Bilingual Education Code. So we have been fighting this for many years, trying to come up with many different things that we can do to sort of supersede and offset this. But currently, the vacancies in this area, we don't have the certified teachers to do it. So what will we do? I can assure you, we're not giving up. That means that we're gonna be taking a look at next year when we re-transition the district again. By the way, there's also a problem, but there's not enough space at DLS for this program because we've grown so large. So we have a teacher issue and we have a space issue. The other, what I'll say to you is this, that next year, what we're going to look at is the spaces, but that's not gonna help if we don't have the teachers. That's not gonna help if we have to service other teach, other students. So I want you to be aware of that. We're concerned that this may even become a larger play, so we're trying to stop it. We're not required to have this program. We love this program, that's why we have it. But it's not a program that is required. What is required is everything else that we just stated. So we're trying to find creative ways to find, to do that. And we have some ideas of what we could do. It may look different, by the way, than what it looks like right now. But you could hear, here, I said it ten years ago, the goal is to have this go all the way up to the twelfth grade. But you need to have teachers to be able to do that and we don't. Mr. Dr. Medina, do I have anything else that I'm missing here before I move on to something else?
No, I think you addressed.
Is that about it? Okay. I will share this with you and we're hopeful that this will open up some things. DLS, you know, is in Ford's, the rented building. With the high school opening up, we're looking at what we could, it'll be coming back into our district next year. We have fidelity right now till, till sixth grade. We could, we're gonna try to maintain that and then supersede that. And again, try and pick it up, go seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Cannot guarantee that. I cannot have English dominant speaking teachers teaching dual language, it doesn't work. And I need to bring, have those teachers go into areas that are required to them, to teach by code bilingual students. I did not mention something before and I want to make, a multi-language learners, excuse me. I want to end where I began on that and then I want to go somewhere else. I feel your pain, having with others built this for the past ten years, but I'm not giving up. We're gonna have to figure it out. If not, I'm gonna be very honest with you and say, we don't have the teachers, here's what we have to do next. I know a statement was made before and I want to reference this about another inaccuracy that really needs to have fidelity. Assertions of ideas that which we spoke about many, many different times, Mr. LaBrice, regarding surplus, regarding budget. How many audit findings were there?
Two thousand eighteen, there was thirty-eight.
There were thirty-eight audit findings. That means that there were fiduciary irresponsibilities where this district was cited for not having adequate funding in the right places. Is that the nice way to say it?
That's one of the reasons, yes.
That's one of the, right. How many, how many items do we have now?
The last audit had zero.
Zero. I keep mentioning that because the answer to the ever looming question of money in surplus is irrelevant. Please speak to that.
The surplus?
Yeah.
So I think we, we touched on this at the last meeting as well. The forty million dollar surplus that, that keeps coming up. When you create a budget that has an extra ten or twelve million dollars in payroll accounts that doesn't, you basically don't have the people working that are gonna use that salary. And then you have an extra eight or ten million dollars in health benefit accounts. And that's just two places. There, professional services was another one, there were other places and those are all verifiable within the audit reports. It becomes very easy to, to not have to manage the budget properly because the funds are always, will always be available for future. The previous boards have actually challenged us to create an effective budget in the last two, this is our third budget. But the last two budgets, that, that's exactly what we did. Picture when you don't have twelve million dollars budgeted in salary accounts that you know you're not gonna spend and you actually sit down with, with the team and the principals and, and budget that money for things that you need it for, like repairs, like curriculum, like programs. And then when you manage it effectively, you actually spend that money. So of course, you would expect that surplus to go down to where it's supposed to be. This year, when we sat down to create our budget and we sat with the auditors and rolled up our sleeves and looked at everything more than once, we, we, we had brought that surplus down to eight point six million dollars last year. And this year, we weren't comfortable budgeting any surplus because it was that close. The budget was managed that effectively. That, that being said, we actually put some measures in place to maybe cut, cut back on, on some spending, which I think has been brought up at some other board meetings recently. But we're, we're now at a point where we're comfortable, where, how we're gonna end this year. And it, it's amazing, I have to say this. We're actually looking at if we can put some very small amounts away in maintenance reserves and in emergency reserves, which that was never done before in this district. So we had a forty million dollar surplus and we decided to not put one dollar away for a rainy day. This year, we had a, a problem at Himaleski, the first day of school, cost us a million dollars to fix it and we had to take that money out of this year's operating budget to do it. If you had emergency reserves or maintenance reserves, you could have used that money instead and not affected your operating budget in the current year. So that's what we're actually trying to do moving forward too, is to take what little we do have and can squeak out and, and put it away for next year or the year after that when it's needed.
So is there a forty million dollar surplus somewhere?
There, there is not.
No. So, the other, the other thing, you know, that I want to say and close with this is the following. That the assumption of ideas that are being sometimes expressed, such as, and I can appreciate individuals talking about concern the direction of the school district's going, but have facts that are verifiable, not assertions that are not verifiable. So where's the direction of the school going? I don't know, but sealed by literacy went up from thirty into the three hundred. Graduation has gone up for a decade straight. Our buildings are beautiful, we're opening up a three hundred million dollar school building. We have not ripped any single teacher because of the importance of that, but we're concerned of where it's going. Or is it just political ideologies and statements that want to be made? And I'm not gonna have that no more, just so that we're clear. Come here with facts, not fiction. We can't take conversations, but I will meet you after or send you somebody to speak to because I want you to be heard. But the protocols and procedures, in case there's a parent that's raising hand, we are not allowed to interface back and forth. Like when you spoke, we did not interrupt you and we would appreciate, appreciate that same thing here. When sometimes when people call out, but the fact that you raised your hand is so respectful and I thank you for that. And I'm gonna ask that I, if you could just raise your hand one more time, Ms. Gomez, can you please make sure that you answer every single question that she has? And if she wants to meet with us, we'll do that as well to have more information that we can give her. So in, and Ms. Gomez, right there as well, the individual, right there, this young woman colleague, right here? If we could just make sure we get her name as well. So, Ms. Gomez, can you raise your hand? And anyone that, just please give her your, your name and your number and we will certainly get back to you. And the individual that will get back to you, so that you're clear, is Dr. Damian Medina, the Assistant Superintendent who is in charge of all this. And I'm sure, and will get you the Director of Bilingual. And after that, we'll have more conversations if necessary. So I want to close by saying how much I know on behalf of my colleagues, the manner in which our nurses came up, the manner in which our parents came up, we're so grateful to have the opportunity to express to you what we're trying to do. We don't have to be angry with each other, we don't have to be nasty with each other. We just, we may not always agree, but we're gonna give you the information that we have that's best at that moment in time with the facts that we have. I'll leave it to you, Madam President.
And I have one more statement just to piggyback off of our discussion on DLS. So I am a former DLS parent myself, my daughter was actually the, um, in the first graduating class. So I just want you to understand the passion that we do have for DLS. I understand and I feel for you and it breaks my heart. That was me every year, not knowing if DLS was going to continue because, you know, they had just started at the time. Because of the program, my daughter speaks and writes better than I do, thanks, thanks to those teachers that were there at that time. But it's gotten harder. There is a shortage in bilingual certified teachers and we need to have the correct certified teachers. I'm sure that most of you speak Spanish, so you can understand that there's a different level of Spanish, you know, for seventh and eighth graders that we ourselves may not be able to articulate correctly. So I have to say that on our end, we are not giving up, we're still trying to find ways. Again, it may not be next year, but it could be the year after that. We are working hard to try to make this program continue to grow the way that it has, not just in reference to the students, but even the staff, you know? Because like Dr. Roman stated, we need the staff in order to be able to continue this program. So again, I just wanted to express my, my feelings towards the program, how much I love it and that again, we aren't giving up on the program and it's not going to be dismantled as it has been stated. It is something that we are not going to let happen and try to continue to grow.
I'll, just two things. One is that we're going to try, we'll be able to sustain the program in its iteration up into the sixth grade right now because it doesn't go into different areas that are credit bound, that are required, that you have different levels of programmatic aspects at the high school, middle school, secondary level. So we can keep this in this sort of nest. We actually branched out and tried to make it more than we could. And I think that that respectfully, we should all be applauded for trying to do that. But it comes with a different set of rules that we have to legally follow. I did, and we're gonna look to see what we can do about that. Something was mentioned before, we just had to correct, someone just informed me about the following. We have an addendum this evening and on that addendum, it has the custodial stipends that are corrected. Similar to what we express with our, our esteemed Director of Security and Manager of Security, that we had to correct those as well. And I want to thank you for that opportunity. I'll give my superintendent report later. We wanted to get the side, I wanted to speak about other things that are going on in the district that are really wonderful, like our graduation rates for a decade going up and maintaining despite all the things that have been going on. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion?
Madam President?
Yes?
Um, I just wanted to go back to the budget again because I, I think I've learned a lot over, you know, all of this time and through this difficult moment. Mr. LaBrice, how long have you been our business administrator?
I was appointed October of twenty-one.
Correct. Right, so that's, this is your third year, correct? And the forty million dollar surplus was running for a long time due to, you said something about eleven million dollars in the PCR that... Can you explain that and kind of a little bit louder? Because I think, I think there's a misunderstanding here. And I think, um, if you could just make that a little bit clearer about what that means.
So the position control roster is, is a list of every employee in the district and what their salary and stipends are. It's also associated with an account number. The, when each person is paid from an account, you sum up the people... you sum up the people in that account, and that's what's budgeted for that particular account. It's enough to pay all the people that are budgeted to work there, including vacant positions. If you don't have an accurate PCR, you, basically the numbers become arbitrary, for lack of a better word, and, and in this case, they were actually just rolled over year after year.
Can I, I wanna connect, let's clarify, define arbitrary.
There was no backup that matched the numbers that were in the budget. I mean, that's, those reports are all over them.
Right. And therefore, you have been here for three years, and now we have zero audit findings, correct?
We had two the first year, and then zero the, our second year, yes.
Okay. I just wanna make that clear because I think, I wanna thank you for bringing the fidelity back to everything that we have been doing. And although it has brought us to a difficult reality, I think it's important that the zero percent audit findings, I mean, the zero audit findings means we're moving in the right directions. It's kind of like when you finally paid off your debt and figured everything out, and you're starting from a really good place, and the only way to go is up. And it was very disheartening to find out the negative information we had found out. And if it wasn't for Mr. Lowbrace and this administration and this superintendent, it would not have been discovered. Therefore, I think that, yes, we have found ourselves in a really difficult place for this year, and people are sounding disappointed, and we are all reacting to this. But these are things that are left over from something that is being fixed. And now there is a whole handle on it, and it will only move forward, and it will only move forward in a positive way, in a way that happens with integrity, fidelity, and also transparency. And, you know, those are the things that nobody ever wants to talk about, right? Because when you're getting hit from the left and from the right in the moment, just like when your own life gets that way, and you have to go lean on things because, whoa, I had to spend too much money on repairing something in my house, and it set me back. We are now at a place where we know where everything is. Every account is straight, and there is nothing extra being spent. Have we had to step back and go lean for a moment? We will. But we will come back with the aggression and, and the passion that a school district should. And again, Mr. Lowbrace, I wanna thank you, and I wanna thank the administration because nobody talks about this. There's a lot of rumors, and there's a lot of things that people say. We're going to be in a good place, and the only way out is through. And we are going to get through this, and we will come back. But please don't blame this administration.
Or the board, because
Or the board.
Because this has been a board for ten years that's done the right thing. Contrary to what individuals want to try and change the narrative, and rest assured, this was a sample of what we will not accept anymore. We will do it respectfully, but we're gonna put the truth out there. This district was fractured programmatically, fiscally, it no longer is, and an independent auditor has told us that. That's why we are a lighthouse district. That's why we have a lot of positive things that are going on here that people don't wanna mention or talk about. Let's say this one more time. When we arrived here, graduation rates were in the fifties. We're approaching nineties. That's not by accident. That's by having phenomenal teachers backing them and programs that make that happen, and making sure the fidelity of what we do is accurate, not the rumors, not having it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Very well said. Any other discussion? All in favor? Oh. No. Okay, so moving on. Whereas pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B, the Board of Education may exclude the public from the portion of a public meeting wherein the board discusses any of the matters set forth at NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B one through nine. Now, therefore, it be resolved that in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Board of Education shall conduct a closed session pursuant to the provisions of NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B for the pers- for the purpose of discussing the following matters, personnel and matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. It is anticipated that the length of time of this executive session will be sixty to ninety minutes, and that action may be taken in public after executive session. I need a motion to enter executive session.
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The time is now six fifty-five, and we will be entering executive session. I need a motion to close executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on to amendments and revisions to the agenda?
So there is an addendum that was placed out for public viewing. In addition, finance items twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-seven, for clarity, all refer to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Approval to pay deductible in the amount of fifty thousand dollars towards the cost expenses and resolution in the matter of docket number M I D dash L dash two-two-nine-zero dash two-three as required by insurance carrier. Approval for Fainer Arango to serve as spring high school boys volleyball coach in the amount of two thousand five eighty-five to be paid from account number fifteen dash four-zero-two dash one hundred dash one hundred dash zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero dash zero-three. Approval to utilize SV Entertainment LLC for the Perth Amboy High School Project graduation on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh from nine-thirty PM to one-thirty AM at a cost not to exceed twelve hundred dollars under supervision of Mr. Keith Guarino Principal and Ms. Carla Garcia Principal to be paid through Student Activity Funds. Approval to utilize any excuse for a party Perth Amboy High School Project graduation on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh from nine-thirty PM to four-thirty AM at a cost not to exceed six thousand dollars under supervision of Mr. Keith Guarino Principal, Ms. Carla Garcia Principal, also to be paid using Student Activity Funds. And last one revision to finance item number twenty-five to correct, approval to utilize Parrot Sumgin as an Architect of Record. That's all the revisions.
Moving on to, I need a motion for the approval of minutes of regular meeting held on May second, twenty-twenty-four, and approval of executive session meetings held on, um, May second of twenty-twenty-four. I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? I need a motion for the approval of bill list for June twentieth of twenty-twenty-four and the following payrolls of May fifteenth and May thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. I need a second?
Second.
Second by Madam Vice President. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Lowbrace, I would like to abstain from check number ten twelve and ten thirteen. And now for correspondence, the State of, the State Department of Education, letter received from the Teachers Pension and Annuity Fund approving the application for early service retirement for the following individuals with the following effective dates. Lynn M. Audet, July first of twenty-twenty-four. Elizabeth Barclay, July first of twenty-twenty-four. Raymond Chow, July first of twenty-twenty-four. Liliana Cortez, July first of twenty-twenty-four. Michelle Foy, July first of twenty-twenty-four. Cassandra Lawrence, July first of twenty-twenty-four. Mary Alice McKish, July first of twenty-twenty-four. Lisa Orson, July first of twenty-twenty-four. Letter received from the Public Employees Retirement System approving the application for deferred retirement for the following individuals with the following effective date. Tammy Gonzalez, May first of twenty-twenty-four. Blanca Cardona, May, June first of twenty-twenty-four. Angelina Medina, July first of twenty-twenty-four. Mary E. Sanchilal, she, sorry, of July first of twenty-twenty-four. And Lisa E. Valas, July first of twenty-twenty-four. And now for our Board Secretaries' reports. Mr. Lowbrace?
So we had one bid opening on May twenty-third. It was for Moving and Relocation Services. Business Relocation Services, Secaucus, New Jersey, fifty-nine thousand nine hundred. Complete Liberty Transportation and Storage Company, Berkeley Heights, New Jersey, one hundred fifty thousand five seventeen fifty. That was the only, uh, bid opening. Secretary Monthly Financial Report for the month of April twenty-twenty-four. Treasurer's Monthly Financial Report for the month of twenty-twenty-four. We had a beginning balance of forty-nine thousand, seven, twelve, four, twenty-one, and thirty-five cents in the general fund. Receipts of thirty-six million, one sixty-nine, eight eighty-seven, fourteen. Cash disbursements of thirty million, nine forty, oh eighty-six, twelve, and an ending cash balance for the month of April for fifty-four million, nine forty-two, two twenty-two, and thirty-seven cents. Acceptance of the reports of the Secretary and Treasurer as submitted and is being in agreement for the month of April twenty-twenty-four. Acceptance of certification from the Board Secretary that no major line item has been over expended for the month of April twenty-twenty-four.
And now for our briefments, announcements, our condolences to Tatiana Torres' mother from the Administration Building, Sandro George Martinez's father, from Cruz, Pamela Spindel's father, Esmeralda Torres' mother, Martina Baez' brother-in-law, from school number seven, Danielle Cochina, Cochia, grandmother, high school, Roberto Morales' mother, Maria Diaz' father, Jacenya de Jesus' niece, from Bullin School, Cheryl Taylor, mother, Emery Shintani, grandmother, Yolanda Hernandez' daughter-in-law, from the Guinness, Doris Castano, sister, Angela Olivera, grandmother, Yudirka Tejeda de Jesus, grandfather, Jacqueline Padilla, aunt, from Himaleski, Kelly Rosado. And as we conclude the school year, I just want to start off, um, or conclude by saying, I want to extend my deepest gratitude to our staff members, all of them. Your hard work, dedication, and commitment to our students have been remarkable. I know each year there's a new challenge, but you continue to move forward and, you know, make every year memorable for our students. Your tireless efforts and always prioritizing the well-being and education of our student does go unnoticed. Next year marks a significant milestone for our district as we move into our new beautiful state-of-the-art building. I'm very excited for that, and I hope you all are too. This long-awaited transition represents years of planning and perseverance. The new facility will provide an, a modern learning environment for our students and staff, and it's a momentous occasion to hold soon our Board of Ed meetings there in that beautiful new space that we've all been waiting for. This is a testament of our collective dedication and hard work that we've put into this new building. For the teachers, I want to acknowledge that I know that change is hard and transitioning, and not just the teachers actually, a lot of other, um, members of this community are being transferred to new classrooms or maybe even new roles, and we understand that preparing for this transition is a significant task, and we will try, we will, not try, we will, provide you with whatever support it is that you may need in this new transition. Some positive news. This summer, we are offering a comprehensive summer school program. We will continue with our programs despite everything that is going on. With a budget allocation of three hundred and fifty thousand, this is a initiative not only for the students, but also for the staff members. It can, provides continuity and education for our students and also creates job opportunities for our staff. It allows our teachers to continue working, building relationships with the students, and also addressing the learning gaps that some of our students may have. In reference to our communication, we will continue to communicate effectively. I think that's vital for our success, whether it's through our website, whether it's through our amazing new app. But communication is, is essential during these transitional times. We're excited to continue to use all the streamlined communications that we have been using with the parents. I think our administration has done a good job, whether it's through our magazines, um, the websites, the app, robocalls, all of that. I think you guys have done an amazing job at continuing to keep that streamline of communication with the community. Another fun fact, um, that's very exciting, we are going to, for the first time, have a meeting with our PTO, with the PTOs from all of the schools. They are all going to be invited to have a meeting with different members of the Board of Education to continue that communication and efforts to continue to be aligned and effective, not just on this side, but also in the school and within the community. So I'm very excited for that. As we look ahead, we recognize that change is the inevitable part of growth, and whether it's adapting to a new classroom, a building, office, or a role, we must rise to the occasion and lead by example as educators and as leaders. It is our responsibility to navigate these changes with positivity and determination. Let us continue to work together and united in our mission to improve our beautiful and expansive district. While changing can be challenging, it is our duty to do what is right for the district and for our students overall. Some more news, if, just a reminder that, um, on August twelfth, August twenty-eighth and August twenty-ninth, that is the last week of August, but we will be having, um, a very hefty but important week. We will be having the grant opening of the new high school. Also, we will be inviting the community to the grant opening on the twenty-eighth. All will be invited. There will be different times allotted throughout the day for the community to come and see this new school. And on the twenty-ninth is our board meeting, if I'm not mistaken, um, at the new school. And shortly after that, we will be starting a new school year, which is very exciting. Yes, I was accurate? Okay. So the twenty-ninth will be our board meeting at that new school. So invite everyone who did, wasn't able to make it to the grant opening for the community to come to our board meeting that day. The room is beautiful. So we're all excited to house the meeting there. In closing, it is important to continue to collaborate and strive for the continuous improvement of our district. I think that we have all, including you all, have done a great job at continuing to enhance the lives of our students and their education and the broader community, to be honest. And once again, I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you for your hard work, dedication in this school year, and let us embrace the changes ahead with optimism and shared sense of purpose. Thank you again, and I hope that you all have a restful summer and ready to start the new year. Thank you. And now for our Superintendent's report, Dr. Roman?
Good evening. Couple reminders. One, uh, after the Board of Education meeting, August twenty-ninth, we are closed on Labor Day, but on September third, we have our Staff Development Day One. Information will be forthcoming as we're still building that, uh, from the Curriculum Office to provide support for our staff and to also give staff an opportunity to see, uh, the new high school as well. Uh, Dr. Medina and Mr. Rodriguez are actively working on that. September fourth is also Staff Development Day number two. September fifth is the first day for our students and September sixth is the, uh, day, second day for students. And what we want to do is really try to talk about the professional development that we want to have, not only for staff but for students and expectations. We're looking at dress code changes, policies that will continue to enhance the security of the district, um, and the, the common welfare of the district. Regarding the high school, one thing that I wanted to make mention of was that although we are spending time focusing on making sure that this high school opens up, uh, in the manner that it should, after working on it for ten years, all of us, we have not forgotten any of our other schools, as I told the principals at a meeting, that all the schools are important, they are budgeted. We have plans for them to continue to enhance facilities where we can with limited budget, but that the resources and the reason that our graduation rates keep increasing, it's because it is a pre-K twelve denomination conversation of what it is that we're doing to transition the changes in this district. So thank you to all the staff members. I've met with a couple of different staff members this week and I can say that, uh, they continue to be not only resourceful, but I'm looking forward to working with them in collaboration to continue to move forward and I'm, I recognize and they recognize the areas that we both and all need to work towards enhancing. The, I wanted to make mention of the following to ensure that there is clarity on some things that were mentioned before. Dual-language program in grade seven, eight will not be offered next year. Dual-language students entering grade seven and eight next school year will be assigned to attend Shell Middle School or McGinnis Middle School, depending upon their residency. You'll be receiving, parents, a letter tomorrow by the interim director of bilingual ESL and world languages, Dr. Vivian Rodriguez, and that will transition to, uh, Lilian A., who will be doing this for us moving forward, sh- as our director of, uh, bilingual and world languages. And you'll be getting by August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, your child's schedule for his or her middle school. If you do not receive that information, please reach out to your assigned middle school, but you could also reach out to the director of bilingual. I wanted to also mention that at this juncture, to ensure clarity, we have one su- one certified school nurse for each of our buildings. Again, we're only required to have one for the district, it's important to note that. We don't feel that's enough. Uh, preschool does have to have different denominations there, but we have one certified school nurse for each of our buildings and a nursing supervisor, which many districts do not have. Last but not least, I echo many of the things that, uh, our, uh, President stated regarding wishing you well and getting some rest and joining us in the next endeavor. But there was one piece that also needed to be clarified to ensure there's no error. The security, the director of security and the manager of security did not receive any other raise than three-point-five. That's the raise they received. The amount that was on the agenda included their stipend amount and every single armed guard in this district receives that and we came to those terms uh, about a year and a half ago as, in reference to how we wanted to continue to secure our districts by having armed guards that are here. So, so there's no, uh, misconstrued analysis or understanding of anything. They received a three-point-five raise, nothing more. And that's what every single person in this district has received and that's well-deserved for these two gentlemen. And they are receiving a stipend for the, uh, armed guard and all armed guards receive that. Matter of fact, there are other armed guards that are on the agenda that are receiving. You just see them with the numbers saying dash, 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 the number, 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 and they're get- receiving stipend. The error in the agenda, my apologies to these two gentlemen, was that their stipend was included in their salary and it should not have been. So it created some confusion. I hope that clarifies everything.
Thank you for the clarification again.
Thank you.
And now moving on to our Curriculum Committee with Mr. George.
Yes, Madam President, I, I would like to, uh, move item one on page four to item twenty-two on page nine.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any abstentions? Moving on with our chairperson from Personnel, Madam Vice President.
Madam President, I'd like to move items number one on page ten through, I think we are on ten, two, two, two. Yep. And there were amendments to this, am I correct, Mr. LaBrice? So this would include amendments?
The add- the addendum.
Rather. Um, through items number twenty-one. Is it, was the, whether, was there an additional addendum? Like after number twenty-one, just to make sure. Cause I couldn't find it.
The addendum had only revisions, twenty-one is the last one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. LaBrice. So again, moving the item number one on page ten through item number twenty-one on page thirteen, including the addendums mentioned earlier. Second? And this is a roll call. Roll call, Mr. LaBrice?
Request, uh, discussion, Madam President.
Discussion, I guess, before a roll call?
Okay. Uh, I want to welcome the ten new hires in item one and wish them long and, uh, happy and healthy careers here at Perth Amboy, welcome to the district. Uh, I'm gonna be voting, so since it's gonna be a roll call, Mr. LaBrice, you can log it early. Based on discrepancies I heard from the union representatives and from administration, I am not totally a hundred percent clear, so I'm gonna vote number no on number nineteen. And then, uh, I've been approached with some negative feedback regarding some of the transfers. I'm not gonna select individuals, so I'll be voting no on number twenty, the entire list. That's all I have, Madam President.
Mr. Anderson?
No to number four, nineteen, and twenty. Yes to all other items as presented by the chairperson.
Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Marte?
Yes.
Ms. Melendez?
Yes.
Ms. Oduyela?
Yes.
Mr. Keles?
Yes.
Vice President Gonzalez?
Yes.
President Peralta?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to Finance, with the revisions, I'd like to move items number one on page fourteen through item number sixty-five on page thirty-five. I need a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion?
Yes, Madam President, do we have a fee schedule that the board can see for number twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-seven? On page nineteen and twenty.
Can, I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
Yes, numbers twenty-four, twenty-five on page nineteen, number twenty-seven on the following page. Do we have a fee schedule that the board can see? It says with their fee schedule, can we see what that fee schedule is?
Mr. LaBrice?
Uh, those should have been in attachments?
Okay, I'll accept that in fact it was there. I didn't receive my packet until this evening, just before the meeting, so I wasn't able to view it. Uh, that's all I have on those items.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm opposed to number twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-seven.
You mean twenty-six?
Uh, no, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-seven, no fee schedule.
Okay.
At least I didn't see one.
Okay, now moving on to Buildings and Grounds with our chairperson, Mr. Keles.
Madam President, I'd like to move item number one, page thirty-six, letter B and abstain from letter A.
Second?
Second by Madam Vice President, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on, I need a motion for any old business? Any old business, anyone? No? Okay. And then for new business. So I need a motion for the approval of student ID ending in three, four, zero, remain on home instruction for the remainder of the school year. If student qualifies under the individuals of, with Disabilities Education Act, placement will be made in accordance with the recommendation of the Child Study Team or if student is not classified under the IDEA, student to be removed and placed in the alternative educational setting as recommended by the Student Disciplinary Committee at the hearing conducted on June sixth of twenty-twenty-four. The approval to return student ID ending in one-two-eight to school for the following twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five school year as recommended by the Student Disciplinary Committee at the hearing conducted on June sixth of twenty-twenty-four. Approval to return student ID number ending in two-six-one to school for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year upon receipt of a such a satisfactory psychiatric clearance as recommended by the Student Disciplinary Committee at the hearing conducted on June sixth of twenty-twenty-four. And lastly, for the approval to remove student ID number ending in zero-one-two from schools and place at an alternative educational setting as recommended by the Student Disciplinary Committee at the hearing conducted on June sixth of twenty-twenty-four. Move it. Move.
Second.
Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? And now I need a motion, or any other new business guys, before we move on? No? Okay, and lastly, I need a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstention? The time is now nine-thirty and our meeting has adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.